I'd like to welcome everyone to our Monday night, August 21st, 2017 work session. Due to the fact that we have some guests here, we're going to move number two to number one. Joe, we're going to move requests from the Warren Heritage Society for utilities.
Council is here to request, to consider the request from the Executive Director of the Warren Heritage Society for utility fees initially put in place by Town Council for services at the 101 Chester Street as they have done in the previous years. And Patrick Paris is here to address the council as well. He's requesting fifteen thousand like he has two previous years.
Joe, can you bring the council up to speed at the last liaison that Town and County had on donations?
Yeah, it was discussed at the liaison meeting and Warren County indicated that the Heritage Society had stopped requesting funds for several years now for in-kind or free utilities or any sort of that. And they hadn't seen any future requests. And so it was left at one point that Mr. Stanley was going to go back and talk to the Board of Supervisors, but we never heard anything back from Mr. Stanley.
All right. We have in our house tonight. Mr. Paris, would you like to address the council on this?
Absolutely.
So that you know that we had it on the liaison committee meeting and they recommended to us that we recommend to you to come back to the county first with your request and then whatever leftover, if you had any leftover, you would come back to the council.
Well, thank you, Mayor Thornton. Members of council, thank you for letting me be here. And since I don't address you all every day, is this where you'd like me to stand?
You know what? This is fine.
Okay. First of all, thank you again for what you've done for us in the past. Thank you again for considering this request currently. I can add to what Joe just mentioned concerning the request. First of all, I believe in our first year, we were ten thousand and then the second year, we asked for fifteen. What we were trying to do was even out to see what our utility bill would be over a twelve-month cycle. We have three main buildings and several smaller buildings. Not every building has plumbing, of course, you know, because we have some very old buildings. But every building, and not every building does have electricity. But what we have been able to do, not just for the town, but with the town, town government, Town Council, since we have been able to free up that income has been pretty incredible. So the past two years that we've received this abeyance is the two-year period of time that we've been able to work with the town on the Battle of Front Royal commemoration, which of course has been very popular with the public. It's been very successful for us as a historical society, as an institution. We have garnered the attention of a lot of reenactors who are interested in our Civil War history and want to come here, as well as members of the public who are also looking to see the Civil War history of Warren County developed. So it's been very positive and of course, you know, pie is just so big. So by being able to free up that slice of our income from our operating budget, we're able to throw resources towards that, work with you all to do things of that nature. In addition, of course, to everything else we do, now exhibits. You all received a memo, correct? You saw the list. So I will stand up here and read through the laundry list. That's why I typed it. Everything from Festival of Leaves all the way down to history camp programs in the summertime. That said, when we, I did understand from Joe that you were interested in what cooperation we do with the county. Around, I think it was around 2007 when the economy got difficult, that we stopped requesting money from the county because I understood that it might not be granted. You know, there was just so much money to go around, especially to nonprofits. So what we began doing with the county was work with them so that we could receive in-kind assistance and do grant applications together. And we've done that almost every single year since, very successfully. So Fairview, you know, the old stone house north of town, we've been working on stabilizing that for close to a decade now, put new roof on, you know, now the entire building, pointed up the entire building and it's a stone building. There's a lot to point. Did demolition of nonhistoric rear porches. In other words, we've worked with the county so that they have fed financially into projects that we conduct, again, in kind of what we've done with you all with the utilities events in an in-kind way. So in other words, we haven't asked for a check. We've asked for kind of a working relationship. So just to be clear, you know, I'm sure that Doug could ask somebody to get him the details, but we've continued to work with the county. I would describe them as very easy and good to work with on these projects. They have not turned us down and when we have worked together on grants, we've won grants. Most recently, I'm sure you all have seen the Warren County Civil War brochure. That was the result of a grant that we went in on with the county and won. So we do work with the county. They do pony up when they need to in this in-kind way. So I'm sharing that with you because of course, what we're asking of you all is to assist us financially in the, in the sense of making sure that our financial shift remains afloat, that we're able to do all of the things that we always have done and continue to offer services, projects, cooperation to not only the people of the community, but of course to this body whenever you all need something. So when we're asking for this assistance, again, we don't want a check. We just want to have that good working relationship with you that we do with the county. And the utility advance seems to work out very well. That's been, again, my experience. As long as I'm standing here though, if anyone has any questions, comments, anything at all, here I am.
Anyone have any questions for?
No.
Ron, do you have anything to add?
No, that's, that's pretty much it. I was just coming here because normally we have the Executive Director and have a board member that would, would come with him. So, no, it's just that there is a lot that goes on that we, we do draw in a lot of tourists, which I'm assuming spend money in town. And we just need, like I said, help with the, with utilities. Basically, we've replaced in the majority of our buildings, all of our regular lighting with LED lighting, which should reduce, my election was done by three or four months or maybe six months ago. Should reduce our, you know, our footprint as far as usage is concerned. And like I said, we don't have a huge demand for electricity other than our air conditioners.
And I'm glad Ron brought that up because last year when we applied for the events, you all directed me to see what we could do to keep utilities possible. So I invited Rappahannock Electric Cooperative to come in and they toured all of our buildings. You gave us a list of suggestions, which as Ron just mentioned, we've already followed through them. So in other words, we're trying to, we're trying to do everything we can to make this as easy as possible for both of us. Our Balthus House, for instance, the 225-plus-year-old home on Chester Street, we don't keep it air-conditioned in the way that someone would live in. We keep it tolerable during the daytime so that when somebody comes in on a tour, you know, they're not uncomfortable. They're not either, you know, freezing cold in the winter or bringing up in the summer. But aside from that, it's fine with us if it's in the eighties. We just want it to be stabilized. You know, if you don't climate control an old building like that, you can, it's just a matter of time before you start having a lot of major issues. So what we're trying to do is also be responsible. We're not simply asking for help. We're happy to take direction from you, work it out. It's just, it is a significant portion of our operating budget just trying to keep the lights on, so to speak, for a 501(c)(3) that owns multiple buildings.
Do you know what the volume of electricity, well, your utilities, do you know how much you used last year?
I don't have last year's quote on me, Joe.
Or?
I have the, yes, the, last year was, the total was thirteen thousand fifty-seven dollars.
That's how much we contributed?
Yeah, that's how much we contributed and it is lower than prior years. So it's been coming down the past three years.
Counsel? Mr. Mayor, going back to what you said at the beginning, what did Mr. Stanley say in regards to, I went into the meeting, so what did he say? Doug, refresh my memory, that Doug said that they would have to apply November?
Yeah, in November of 2016, the notes from that meeting, the liaison meeting, said Mr. Stanley stated the county, stated that the county had made contributions to the Warren Heritage Society in the past years. The Warren Heritage Society failed to send the necessary paperwork one year and informed the county that they no longer needed the contribution.
That they no longer needed it?
Right. And then Mr. Stanley said he would take this to the board and suggest that he address this matter with Patrick Paris and ask the Warren Heritage Society to submit his request during the county's budget cycle.
Oh, it's been a few years, if I may. I would not characterize that as the way that I would have expressed it. I'm quite sure that what I said is, if I understood from members of the board that it was unlikely that we were to receive monies, I simply would have politely declined to submit the paperwork because it's better to be adept and to submit it and to be turned down. The other, oh, not turn around, but the other thing, of course, is what we, for a few years, we, we did actually receive some cash from, from Warren County. Since then, like I said, I would characterize my working relationship with the county as very good on the projects on which we work together. What I've found is that it is better to try to work with in-kind assistance to local government rather than to ask for a check. So for instance, unless, sorry, I'm showing my age, I've been on the job thirteen years and now this position, unless I'm wrong, I don't think I've ever asked for money from Front Royal, the town of Front Royal. We've always just worked together and that's the relationship I find most fruitful with the county. Similarly, we've worked with them on projects and have succeeded as a result. And in this instance, it's, it's similar. Of course, there's a dollar amount associated with it because it's utilities, but it's an abeyance. It's, in other words, you're just not charging us for utilities as opposed to writing us a check, which then obviously we'd have to turn right back around and give you.
Which we have to be careful of because we could have someone else come through the door and say, hey, you know, will you pay our electric? And then we get into a quagmire. Right now, we have everything that is, there's no more double taxation in the town of Front Royal, Warren County. We have a great working relationship and I would support something this year to you guys, no doubt, but I think that the council is meaningful to go with something that maybe next year before coming to us, go to the county first.
I'd be happy to do it in whatever way you'd like.
Now, I don't know what council is going to come up with tonight, but we're going to pass it around here a little bit.
Sure.
And Jake, would you like to chime in?
Well, going back to the question I asked, when you say in-kind, and you're telling me that the county worked with you guys on projects, whatever, and I don't know what to wear, but, but going back to the requests that we have before is, we've already approved for this year from last year's budget. Am I correct on that?
Not for them, not for the Heritage. We've already set our budget.
So this money, if we would do it, would kind of have to come out of the general fund?
Yes.
For this year.
The budget's already been passed by this year.
We didn't talk about that till last year, right?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
Yeah, we talked about it, but we never made any action because nobody ever came and asked.
I kind of remember that a little bit differently, but my question, Hal, you kind of touched on this and I can't remember who spoke to it last year, but I just asked the question of what, what makes the Warren Heritage Society as a nonprofit different from the other companies that may come and solicit for free utilities that are offering services to Warren County? And don't get me wrong, I voted to support it last year as well, but I just wanted to ask that question so that everybody here can clearly understand that this isn't a, as you said, kind of a free-for-all for people to come in and ask for utilities and that's what I think needs to be stated.
Well, councilman, first of all, thank you for asking the question and Mayor Thornton, if you want.
Go right ahead and answer that.
Because I understand what you said a couple of minutes ago, that you, it's, you want to be careful not to have a slippery slope and have any institution, any organization kind of ask for similar events. The reason that I gave you the long list of things that we do is not simply because that's what we do. Every organization has a mission and they follow through on it and they could produce similar lists, but what we do is not just provide services to the community, we're also income generating for the community. So as Ron Samir's mentioned, and he's been our past president twice, he's currently on the Board of Directors still, so he can answer to this. I mean, the Festival of Leaves has been the largest annual festival since 1971 is when we began. We draw people in on a daily basis. So today, even during the eclipse, we have, we have families coming in. So in other words, what we're doing is helping draw people into the community and we do that not just by ourselves, but in concert with the other museum in town, the Warrant Rifles, and this is important, with your own tourism office. So I work very closely with Tim Smith, you can ask him. We make sure that we work together to help bring people in. We're constantly calling each other. I make sure that his staff is trained to be able to speak to the tourist opportunities here in town. So when they get visitors, they can send them up and down the street and when we get people, we do the same thing. I always ask, have you been to the visitor center yet? So we make sure we steer people down their direction. So in other words, I would say that the Warren Heritage Society is occupying a rather unique position in that we're not just a 501(c)(3). We are offering services and staying open twelve months out of the year, six days a week during the tourist season to help not just protect and preserve the county's history, but help everybody in the downtown area. You know, when you get those tourists that are coming in, visitors from sometimes close by, Winchester, Frederick County, Strasburg will come over, sometimes snowbirds, you know, people coming down from New England. When they come through, they come through and they spend their money and the more that we have downtown, the greater chance there is that people are going to stay downtown and spend more. In other words, you can't just have one restaurant. You know how this works. You have to have several, gives people options. They like choice, they'll pick one. You have to have multiple museum buildings so that people feel like they're, they're getting something for coming down the street and they're, and they're appreciative. You know, we, we hear positive comments all the time. People enjoy what we have to offer. So what we're doing is something that I would argue is benefiting the economy of the town. And I don't believe I would be alone in making that argument. I think you have town employees who would, who would characterize that statement as that's true. So if that helps you, that is the list that I gave you, if you weren't able to read it, look through it again. I mean, it's a lot of those things that are on that list, you'll see are directly linked to other aspects of the town's economy, your bottom line, in other words.
And we absolutely, I'm just saying this, I'm sure council realizes the work that you folks do at the Heritage House promoting people coming to Front Royal, spending money. Our dilemma is, this was new to us two years ago when we did the ten and then last year we did the fifteen. Now, third year, and we've already passed a budget and it's not included in the budget. So we would have to go into the general fund and council kind of shies away from going into a general fund. So Chris, what do you have to offer?
We're still deciding.
John?
Council's view on this request in the past has really been tied mostly to the archives section on the list where the preservation and holding open to the public research body historic materials on our community, if the Warren Heritage Society were not providing that service, that would be something that the town would probably experience a lot of pressure to provide ourselves. I don't know that we could provide that service open twelve months out of the year, Monday through Friday, with the proper supervision and care for those archives for fifteen thousand dollars a year. So in the past, when we looked at this, we considered that to be a goodbye, all things and so forth.
Mary, it's your turn. Welcome to Town Council.
My question was, how much has the county put in, in some of this bill?
Well, specific, the county specifically know on this specific bill simply because they don't provide utilities. So, you know, it's the town, we're coming to you for that very specific reason. But again, there's, on that list and I have a separate one for the county, we do work on projects with the county that are county-specific, you know, properties that are out in the county. And as a result, I would characterize them as, again, very good to work with. I've had a very positive working relationship with many members of the Warren County Board of Supervisors and with Doug Stanley for many years. So I would say that they're, they're pulling their weight is what I'm trying to say, you know, when it comes to financially. I do have a question and you must forgive me, but since I don't sit on your body, I don't understand exactly how this works. But my understanding with, two years ago when we initiated this with councilmen who are no longer on the, on the board.
Yeah, Shay Harper.
Correct. It was my understanding that this was an abeyance that was, in other words, not coming out of the budget, but coming out of the, you said it was going to go to enterprise fund. So I don't know if that makes a difference in the way that you have to make a decision. In other words, it's, it's not like I'm coming to you and asking for fifteen thousand dollars. All I'm asking is that we not be charged thirteen thousand, you know, over the course of twelve months.
Which we, which we haven't done. So we haven't experienced that.
If we do not charge, it doesn't come out of general fund.
Exactly.
We just fail to realize budgeted income levels.
Okay.
Which we already find not hitting that.
Also the enterprise fund for electric and water.
Okay.
We're already running behind on those totals.
Okay.
That's where it would come from. So it, it is not likely going to be, we cut a check out of the general fund.
Right, which, yeah, which I'm not asking for. I just, thanks for explaining. I didn't understand exactly how that works. I just remember when Shay initiated this with us, he said that you have an enterprise fund and that would be different than making a budgetary request.
Bill?
Well, that's a very important question. I mean, we funded this thing for what, two years now?
Yes, sir.
And the quagmire he's talking about, I understand other groups coming before us asking for the same favor as such. But my question to the town manager would be, it's not really thirteen thousand.
That's what I'm asking.
It would be some number thereof.
Yeah, if I can give you a chance for that.
The thirteen thousand.
Out of the enterprise fund.
Well, the enterprise funds, it is thirteen thousand. That is the, at the cost.
It's actual cost.
Yes, that's actual cost, that's correct.
Not any management charges, overhead or?
No, sir. The, and council has the option of either receiving with not collecting as revenue or taking a general fund. It's entirely council's decision.
Joe, do we have an option of spreading out maybe a little bit out of water, sewer, electric?
Yeah, BJ, can you explain how you do that?
Just as, just as Mr. Conley has stated there, we would just not recognize the revenue in the enterprise fund. So we have that option. So it wouldn't necessarily be in a budget, budget amendment, we just wouldn't see the income. Another option is the, the bills can't come out of general fund, it's entirely to council.
Thank you, BJ.
What have we done in the past, BJ?
In the past, we've not recognized the revenue in enterprise funds. So water, sewer, wouldn't see that portion, electric.
May I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize to interrupt your discussion.
Why are you here?
Well, as you've heard, we've brought the cost down in part because we always try to keep the buildings up in part because we got advice from Rappahannock. We will continue to make an effort to conserve, in other words, not just water and electricity, but to continue to improve the buildings, to make them hold heat and, and cool air better and to use, like we replaced our light bulbs already with LED bulbs, you know, use better, more efficient light bulbs. In other words, I just thought I would throw that out, that we're, we're also not going to just rest and assume anything. We're constantly trying to.
We asked about that a few years ago and you guys showed a trend and I think BJ just confirmed it, that your utilities have been coming down and that was what we asked for as a council.
Year one, we asked that steps be taken.
Yeah, so.
People responsible.
Joe, you would know because I think we sent some of our people down there.
We sent some of our people.
Yeah, first year and then I think the.
So to see the total continue to drop is a numerical sign that that which was combined with.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request a place on the agenda and then ask our town manager to tell us how much money would come out of each one of the enterprise funds to cover the cost. Jake? Chris? John? Gary? Field? Field, you'll next week's agenda.
Thank you very much.
BJ, you say it was thirteen?
It was thirteen thousand.
Council, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thirteen thousand fifty-seven was last year's.
Thirteen thousand sixty-seven. Let's see if we can.
I'll provide a cost breakdown of all the enterprise funds.
Let's see if we can. If council agrees, let's see if we can stick with the thirteen fifty-seven and let them continue working in more, more energy efficient. That's okay with council?
I'd like to, I'd like for us to do what we did last time, which is up to fifteen thousand and cap it at that.
All right. And we also have Ms. Morris here for number four. So we can do number four, John, continue discussing proposed ordinance pertaining to teetering of dogs in extreme weather. Town Attorney.
Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council, I have the copies of the correspondence between the county attorney and the animal control officers where it was discussed between them and they were copied on the ordinance and where they gave input on the ordinance and their final response was, quote, "I think this is fantastic." This was Deputy Laura Gomez. So Animal Control is happy with it. I've not heard from any town council, know that they have any additional requests or proposals to the ordinance. So this is the ordinance as far as I know that is going to, the proposed ordinance that's going to the county. So I haven't heard otherwise.
We're just mirroring, we're not adding, we're not taking away, we're not, we're just mirroring what is going through to the board. Jane?
Well, that's one of the questions. If we're just going to mirror, why are we doing an ordinance? Why can't we just pass a resolution saying that we accept the ordinance that they are already approving and that? And also, who is going to enforce this?
It will be Animal Control.
Now, has the county already agreed to do this without any kickback to us saying that we have X number in Front Royal, we're going to charge Front Royal a fee to do the teetering and the checking and all the other things to see if it's being enforced?
They have not charged us, to my knowledge, in the past for enforcing this.
Doug, wasn't this, I'm not going to interrupt you, but wasn't this something that they needed to happen in the town so that they can come from the county to the town to enforce illegal?
You know, Animal Control wants the same ordinance in both jurisdictions for ease of enforcement.
Right.
And if it's adopted in the town, then it could be prosecuted by the town attorney and any fees from fines could go into the town coffers as opposed to the county coffers or the state coffers.
John?
Do we know where the county is as far as adopting this same ordinance? Because I understand their desire to have the same ordinance in both jurisdictions. It seems to me, and this, this request originated outside of us, that it would be appropriate for the county to adopt this thing first.
They were going to and then, I forgot why now they, in fact, they were going to adopt it the day before it first came to us and then at the work session when there were some.
Veteran questions?
Some questions by Town Council, they, they put it on hold.
I mean, I have no problem at this point communicating that I'm okay with it. The rest of council seems okay with the draft, but I do want the county to take the first step. It seems to be the appropriate course of action there and then we can go ahead and line up our ordinance. But considering that it is a county-wide enforcement body and Animal Control operates under the auspices of the county, I would want to see the county adopt the standard first and then we can have a reasonable discussion about mirroring the thing here.
Jane?
And I agree with you, John, a hundred percent because I don't think we're in the dog teetering business. This isn't part of the county function or town function, I don't know. I think this is something that we shouldn't even get involved in, period. That's why I think we ought to have a resolution and not an ordinance. Because the day that the county says, we're no longer going to do there, if we have an ordinance on the book that we have to maybe enforce, we have nobody in the town of Front Royal can enforce this. I wouldn't even consider asking the police department to enforce something that, especially when it comes to dog, that's not their, their job. And this is where I have a problem. If, and I grew a child, like I said, that if the county does it and we need to do it and there's no burden to the taxpayers of Front Royal, I have no problem with it. But I do have a problem with it if it comes back to a point where we're going to have to enforce it and we're going to have to do all the other things. And if it is that, I'm not interested even considering.
Jake?
Go for it, John.
So there is another option, I believe, because we adopt, we adopt state statutes by reference all the time, is that is it legally kosher for us to say, as far as dog teetering is concerned, we're going to adopt whatever ordinance that the county has and they choose to change the restrictions, the requirements, that that would fold down to this level?
I'm not aware of any state code that allows. I'm not aware of any state code that allows that it's town or locality in general to adopt by reference another.
Okay. So then we're back to square one with exactly what councilman Tewalt said.
What I would say is if the county withdrew its tethering ordinance, we should drop out.
Do you put a sunset on that or not?
I, no, I think it'd be easy enough that if the county got rid of their ordinance, we could quickly get rid of ours.
Because I guess there's other ordinances with other dog problems that we have that are with the county. This is just an additional tool for them to use. Jacob?
Yeah, just kind of echoing a little bit of what Councilman Tewalt said with the enforcement. It's probably my biggest concern. And, you know, who's monitoring it? Who is determining that animal control needs to be called? There is a little bit of discretion, actually, there's a lot bit of discretion in the ordinance. And my fear is it becomes a tool for, you know, neighbors, tattling on neighbors and not just for animal cruelty of, you know, some of the egregious situations that were explained to us last time during work session, which of course, you know, we'd want somebody to address and take action on. So the enforcement portion of it is probably the part that I have the biggest concern over and who's gonna be monitoring that, who's gonna be responding to that, who's gonna be having conversations with those individuals. And if we can't adequately do that, then that's, again, if we can't enforce that law or ordinance, then I have it.
Jake? Oh, I'm sorry, do you let bills, I'm sorry, Bill. Let Bill, John.
My, I don't have a concern with the, I don't think it's an ordinance. In this ordinance that you call an ordinance, it is written that we will follow state code and you court it very emphatically. Now, if the county adopts that as such, then why can't we just come back and say, we endorse that? Why does it have to be a charter? Why do we have to say exactly what the county says? Why can't we just reference, follow what I'm saying?
It does say an ordinance, something.
It says an ordinance, right. And it's exactly what the county's gonna say. And we didn't go in, obey them by state code and list everything that they had listed. It just said, reference state code, whatever. Why wouldn't we just say, we adopt the same county resolution?
Well, as I explained to Councilman Connolly, I'm unaware of any, in fact, we're a Dillon role state and we are only allowed to adopt ordinances that the state allows us to adopt. So I'm unaware of any state code provision that allows us to adopt by reference another locality ordinance. So we have to adopt our own ordinance. But for ease of animal control enforcing a town ordinance, animal control wants us to have the same ordinance in the town that they have in the county. So there's no, not different sets of ordinances in county and town.
Doug, do we have other ordinances that, in reference to the dog ordinance?
Yeah, dangerous and destructive dogs, we have that.
Are they mirrored ordinances that they need in place? I mean, is this gonna be just something?
Yeah, we've done this before.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request the captain to place this on a back burner until the county approves theirs and then bring it back and see what they've done. Then at that time reconsider and or drop it altogether in case we need it. Whatever, council needs to do. Because right now, I'm not ready to pass anything until the county approves something that we can, we can mirror from and see what their plan is doing.
Phil?
I agree.
Gary? John?
I agree, but I would, I would also say I would, as far as I'm concerned, I'm fine sending back that I like draft, right? That as far as getting us on both sides, I know when we have questions, they hold back on approval. I don't want to see this kind of die at county level as well, simply because we don't want to move at this moment. I don't want us to kind of play legislative chicken with one another. So, I mean, I would, I would certainly encourage Doug to send back that, you know, we like draft or ideally, I can't speak for anyone else here.
Is that what sentiment everyone else has, that the county needs to pass it first and then we mirror from them?
Because it's all about enforcement. Am I correct? I need clarity. So.
And enforcement is county enforcement.
Right. So if we have the ordinance and the county does not, we, the Warren County Sheriff's Department can't do anything for a Front Royal violation, correct?
No, they still could.
Okay, so it sounds like, Doug, that the council wants, are you with us on that, Jake? Want the county to approve first? Phil?
Well, I'm echoing what John says because it makes sense. I personally like what I see in, in the paper. You know, maybe it needs tweaking by someone else. I don't know. But I think we ought to send it back with the endorsement that we like what we're seeing, period. And then when the county does their thing, we'll come back and do ours.
An agreement, gentlemen? Gene?
I'd find, I, yeah, I guess I'll.
We just need to make sure they all kind of stay on the same page with this too. Jake? You're passing it to the county and letting them know that we just want them to act, take the first step.
Yeah, that's fine. But if it did come back to us, then I would have other thoughts on it that I would share. That's fine.
Chris? All right. Can you convey that to them, Doug?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. Continue discussing the ordinance amendments pertaining to the flea markets. Gentlemen?
Well, as you all know, last week, we did not get a second on the motion for the flea market for the table fees. So we brought it back to council tonight for further discussion on what council's desires are.
Same thing happened in a prior meeting also. We kind of, we didn't table, we just postponed some. Let's start with Gene. Where do we, where do you think we need to go with this or do you want to start with Bill first?
I'd like to start first.
Bill, give us a copy of the short memorandum on that.
I wrote a memorandum simply to clarify some of my thoughts. I'd like to clarify, at this councilman's position, we would like to enhance any business within our community, including the flea market. But some serious issues have come forth that needed further discussion prior to approval. It's more complicated than adding Friday onto the regulations of free flea markets within the town. I truly recognize the contribution, long-term value of this flea market to our community. My issues are very clear. Collection of table fees have not been paid for six years, 2011 through 2017, due to some oral discussions and assumptions by both the proprietor and the town manager. Our town attorney has indicated there is no issue with collection of table fee for each table utilized on the flea market days of operation. I recommend that the flea market regulations be changed to reflect the following. The proprietor will be required to pay and report, and this is under the town attorney's advisement. He's studying or looking, and I assume, Doug, at this point, because I just gave it to you. The proprietor will be required to pay and report one dollar for each table sold on a daily basis. This fee be reported and paid to the town of Front Royal on a monthly basis. Flea market has 137 tables operating at a reported rate of 75 to 80% when operating. A quick math calculation indicates 100 tables daily averages about $300 of the town fee weekend or $20,000 annually to be paid to the town. A business fee of $250 or $500 annually must be discussed fully with a quick passage of $250. Brick and mortar businesses, according to the information given to me, pay a fee of $800 annually. These businesses operate on a 300-day schedule versus a flea market working on a 200-day schedule. This business operates on Main Avenue within our community and demonstrates rundown buildings and tables. I appreciate seeing some upgrades to the tables replacing these olden tables. My fifth issue is the enforcement of the table fee collection process under these regulations have not occurred in a timely manner. And six, the regulation indicates that peddlers, peddlers selling new products not only pay an annual fee, but visually show their license to do so. This must be enforced and made clear to each peddler at the flea market. So I have some real significant concerns there and I wanted to state these because we didn't second the motion simply because there were other issues that needed discussion prior to just a quick approval on entry of Friday and approval of market. So that's why I bring these issues up for discussion rather than just a quick passage of a $250 fee. And I'm really concerned about six years of non-fee payment.
Judge?
Okay, so I've got some issues of my own. First and foremost, enforcement of table fee collection, enforcement of peddler licenses, that's a town problem. If we're not doing our job to enforce or collect, that's our fault. It's something merchants' fault. It is our fault. So, yeah, that needs to be rectified. I agree wholeheartedly. That needs to change. That needs to change regardless of what the ordinance is. To me, it doesn't impact my decision-making process of whether or not we allow them to open on Fridays. In fact, the only thing really in here that makes the difference is whether it's gonna be the 250 or the 500. That's something we discussed at the last time this was in front of a work session. I advocated the 250. Most of the rest of the table went the other way. They went for the 500. But everything else on here really kind of boils down to, we're gonna gouge the owner of the business while we've got them, while they want something from us, because we have the ability to compel them to do so. I don't think that's right. I don't think in terms of, you know, just going through and saying, well, we could charge them for this and we could charge them for that, that's not the right way to go about making a decision that was right for the town. And I'm disappointed that we could not bring the ordinance that we already discussed in work session, know that these other issues were brought up at the time, on the floor on Monday, because nobody bothered to second it.
Jake?
So I hear what Councilman Connolly's saying. I would restate it a little bit differently. I don't think it's holding somebody hostage to gouge them for more money because they're bringing up an ordinance and we have the ability to do so. They've requested a special exception to operate on Friday, at which time we evaluated their business and evaluated their operations, realized that, and you can't tell me that any business owner in town wouldn't realize that they aren't paying taxes that they're supposed to or fees that they're supposed to. I think everybody here, if I didn't get a property tax bill, I wouldn't make the assumption that it's free for the six months or free for the year for the town. So I do think that it is our responsibility to collect it. They've asked for a special exception, which in kind triggered an evaluation of the operations where we realized that there is some discrepancies in what's being shared with us and we're asking to rectify those as part of our evaluation of the special exception. I don't think that's holding anybody hostage. So I understand your point in what you're driving home, but the way you stated that, I don't think we're holding somebody hostage and trying to get something from them in order to give them an exception.
Except, Joe, that this is not a special exception. This is an ordinance amendment. We advertised for this, right? This isn't the same as saying we want a variance here, right? This isn't saying, well, we don't want to follow the code as it's written. It was literally an approach that said, we think that this code is outdated. We have sections of our code that are outdated. It's absolutely true. And they said, we think it should be revised because we want to do these things. They want to be open more days. I mean, I said it before, I'll say it again. I mean, there are a ton of businesses in this town that I would love to see open more days. And someone's coming to us where, in a circumstance where they are prohibited by law from operating more days. And they said, can you please alleviate that burden? And we are now starting to say, sure, but we want you to update your tables and we want you to start charging vendors per table and we want a $20,000 per year that we can get out of you at this point. If the, if the goal is to make it more expensive for the business owner to not operate on Fridays, we're doing a really good job in our approach because we're incentivizing the walk away at this point. The flea market is more than just a standalone business. There are a lot of people in this town and in the surrounding community that come to that flea market to conduct commerce. Yes, we need to enforce. Even if we choose not to change this ordinance, we need to enforce. That's our job. You know, and to say, well, if you didn't receive your bill for the, for the property taxes, you couldn't just assume that it was for free. Well, that's true, but you get your bill because the town has a requirement upon it to make sure that the bills are to people in a timely fashion and in the correct way, in a legal way. That's the, it's the burden, the burden of compliance that falls to the town. It doesn't fall to the property owner. Once they've been notified the proper way, then the burden falls to the property owner. But because the town elected to stop enforcement and to stop collection at some point in years past, yeah, I mean, yeah, that definitely needs to be worked out. It's got nothing to do with whether or not this ordinance needs to change.
So the dollar per table and the.
John, I don't like the terminology you used either. I'm not holding anybody hostage. What I'm asking for is enforcement. And when you, when you have a meals tax, I don't think we go out and bill the restaurant down the street. They report to us that they had a certain number of sales and they pay a percentage on that, period. It's no different here. They rent X number of tables on a daily basis. So they ought to be reporting to us, this day we rented X tables at a revenue of this, just like a meals tax.
It is different in two respects.
Okay.
First, the meals tax is a special arrangement by state code whereby the business owner is legally the fiduciary partner with the town in the collection of that tax. That's not how it stands here. And two, they had communication with town staff at some point, which clouded the issue, which puts the burden back on the town. That does need to get fixed. I agree wholeheartedly.
I'm not, I'm not differing what you're saying. I'm just saying that I'm offering a way to enforce that that hasn't been done for six years. And I want to see it done in a certain manner so that we're not sitting here next year and having the same discussion. If we're gonna pass a new ordinance, I want them to succeed. I truly, I would vote for it tonight if I could. But there are issues. It's gotta be resolved.
Jake?
Listen, I, I hear what Councilman Connolly's saying. I understand it and I think that's legitimate points. And I think that the only, the only point I was arguing was not trying to hold somebody hostage. I think that we have to figure out a solution on what's happened in the last six years. And I don't know what that solution is, it sounds like, but why, but by the way you're saying it, is that that's our problem. We should need it to move on with life. And we can have a separate debate on that. Going to the ordinance, I said special exception. We're talking about an ordinance amendment. Regardless, it's brought to our attention at this time, which is what triggered the evaluation is why this is even come up. I don't, I don't think that we should be into mandating table structures and how they look. But I do believe that the one dollar per table was part of our discussion, as was the 250 or the 500. I don't think that was an arbitrary number that was just thrown out there to try to gouge the business owner. So I understand what Councilman Seelock was saying when he was breaking up the math of this. I think then that becomes, again, part of that discussion for us, are we reverting back to the one dollar per table, whereas everybody kind of agreed, we didn't want to go that route initially because it was too hard to track and process. But that was part of the initial conversation. So I understand why it was put in here. And I just want to make that clear so it didn't look like all of a sudden we threw out a $20,000 number to try to gouge the business owner.
My, my problem is that we discussed it at work session. Everyone agreed that it was wiser to go with a flat fee. The main discussion. The main discussion from that point was what that flat fee needs to look like. But now all of a sudden, the rogue's out from under the feet and we're going to be discussing the $1 per table again. So again, and, and if that somehow tied to the fact that town wasn't collecting the taxes for the past six years, I don't know that that's right since the fault was primarily ours.
I think it's additional information came to light. That's, that's what's happened here. And I think that a lot of questions were asked that day when we were talking about the $1. You're absolutely right, $1 was tabled because everybody was like, there's no way to track that. We have no idea how many businesses. And I think that additional information's come forward to see the differences. And I think that when you're facing those different numbers, it triggers a different conversation, which is why I believe that nobody gave it a second because there was some hesitancy on passing something that there's still ambiguity around.
Bill?
We're right back to where we were because it died the other night, Monday night, it died. We still have this on our books. Now, our discussion should be, are we going to maintain that ordinance or are we not? Now, if we are, then we need to do that.
Doug, comment?
I don't want to drag this out.
That's okay.
I just thought of something. You know, we, we looked at surrounding jurisdictions, but is there any merit to maybe sort of asking around the state, which I could do, quickly, to see if there's any other jurisdictions that have found a better way of doing it than what they've done, what we've done locally in Brigger County or Shenandoah County or...
Doug, I don't have my hand up, excuse me gentlemen, but I was here when, when council went with the table fee of $1. And ever how it stopped, we don't, we don't have anybody out there on Saturday. And I have talked to Joe that we need to have someone, whether we give our guy four days on for a week and give him one day on the weekend, but we definitely need someone out in the field. We have a lot of weekend warriors. They're, they're set with regulations that they pay the $200, they gladly pay it. They get a certificate from the town that needs to be on that table. But why have it on the table if nobody goes by to see it? Now, wherever the $1 ended, I have no clue. It was arranged in the day that the flea market would come to the town, they would buy $500 worth of tokens, some type of certificate, I've never seen one. They were to collect $1 and give that person a tab or whatever until they ran out and then they would come back again and they would refurbish. Ms. Hendrick maintains that we owe them $80,000, $86,000 because I guess over the years they, they purchased this many tickets. And that's a lot of tickets, but with, with Bill's conclusion with $20,000 a year, it's very possible. But we don't owe, that was a tax we were to receive. The town, for somehow, they're enforced, flea market never paid, it died. And now it came up, like some of the council members said, because things are wanting to be changed to a Friday operation. So that brings up all the issues that you look at to see if we're going to let her work again on Friday, along with Saturday and Sunday. So tonight, I think the council needs to grasp onto some type of structure, some type of fee. I don't know if it's fair to charge a $500 fee plus a dollar a table or just do a dollar a table. She does have a license, I understand BJ, she has a license for these tables there at the flea market. Does she have a license?
The license for the building that's on the flea market property.
Yeah, she has a license for that, so I don't know legally if that's double taxation. And then do we charge the people that pay the $250 fee, do we charge them another dollar? Is that triple taxation with, with the table fee and the dollar and the 250 and, you know, it's...
The code provides you can charge a business license, for additions and business licenses, and then you can charge an itinerary merchant license.
We've got seven folks that are, Senator, I mean, we're, we're not able to do it at the farmer's market, but we're able to do it at the flea market, if that's correct.
Yeah, farmers are specifically exempt.
Yeah, okay, but that's another, that's where we'll, we'll address farmers. I think council needs to get together and come up with, what do we want to charge? Bill, Judge Hannah?
Yes, my concern is we have an ordinance that says a dollar a table. Now, either that's right or it's wrong. Now, whether we enforce it six years ago or not, that's passed. We have that ordinance. Our, our discussion now, John, should be, do we keep it like that or do we go to 250, 500? Now, I know we, we kind of discussed that, but your reality is that ordinance is still in effect. And what are we going to do tomorrow or this weekend about that ordinance? Are we going to enforce it? Now, if we're not, let's change it.
That's definitely true, David, that's, you know, he does have an appointment, but it is...
Absolutely true.
Now, whether we should enforce it starting Saturday, you know, we are muddling through this thing and as soon as we get some hold on it and get some movement...
It's an ordinance right now.
It is, yes.
It is, I mean, it's fact.
That's what Joe and I talked about last Monday night. Joe, do you have something?
Yeah, I, when this first came about with opening up on Fridays, when I first came aware that there were no fees collected according to the code. Why, I could never find a reason why that ever transpired and why we never collected. I chose not to go ahead and start to implement that dollar per table because I thought we were going to find an easy resolution for the future of the table fees. So therefore, I didn't want to start the old process when I thought the new process was coming very quickly. But I have no problem instructing staff to start enforcing the current code if they, if council chooses to be. I was only reluctant at this point, just because of the process was moving through. I didn't want to start one and then have to revert back to the other.
I mean, I do have a problem with enforcing the code currently if we're in the process of changing the code. So it really does come down to that for me.
Yeah, really, but we're just talking about days, not performance.
That doesn't seem the least bit tight to you.
No, it's right there, reading it.
I'm aware, and yet for six years, the town has not done anything. If we're in the process of changing this, I think this is the time, once we change this ordinance is when we should actually, if we're going to be changing the structure of the way that fees operate, we start our enforcement as soon as that's done.
You're just enforcing it an extra day, John.
It's going to be a...
This, this performance thing is the backbone of this thing working. This, this is the compromise. The dollar amount, the Friday, I don't even think we're there yet. But the performance, all this here that I'm reading about the tables being clean, not selling produce and all that, that needs to be enforced, absolutely. Why do we need to wait until we decide if it's a Friday or not to enforce it on Saturday and Sunday?
Because to this point, if we believe the applicant thing, right, the town has, has admitted that they do not intend to enforce. And I have not seen anything from us on our side of the table to, to counteract that. It's our word against theirs at this point.
Again, against what, our word against theirs, about what?
That town should have been enforcing these six years, should have been collecting the dollar table these six years. I mean, you guys want to go for the dollar table right now, really stick it to the little guy. I'm, I guess you all can instruct the town to...
You gotta stop saying that, that's pure mockery.
That's not true. That's not purpose.
But that's...
John, that's not true. That is not true. The point is, we have an ordinance that is in effect that we aren't enforcing. Now, we need to change the ordinance. Now, if it's 250 or 500, I don't care. I want an ordinance that we're going to honor.
I want an ordinance that we're going to honor too.
Whether it's a date or a dollar, I want an ordinance that we're going to follow.
I want an ordinance that we're going to follow too. But if you start on one stream and then absolutely turn it around in two weeks, once we've advertised again and changed the ordinance, doesn't that seem a little bit like heading down the wrong road, turn it right back around?
What if we keep it the same?
Well, that's the question. That is, that's the heart of the question. Are we going to revise the ordinance or are we not?
Jake, what do you think about keeping it the same? Or do you like the fact that staff recommended a $500 yearly fee, omitting the collection of the dollar? What's your thought on it?
So I, I'm not overly concerned about what we're going to switch it to. I think the debate that we were just having is, what are we doing right now? So, you know, Councilman Conley was talking about, the ordinance was on us to enforce and collect the appropriate fees. And so that was the discussion that was just being had, it was like, you're right, the ordinance is on us. Let's start doing that because this might be two weeks, it could be a month, who knows? But at the very least, let's give notice to what is currently there and the standards that are currently in place, just like we would with anything else as we're starting to work forward on this. As I said in my last statement, I feel like there's been some new information that was shared. I don't, I don't feel like it's sticking it to the little guy when they've been operating under the same ordinance that's always been in place, no, we haven't even done one thing to it. So nobody's sticking to anybody. That if we decide as a council to change this to, you know, 250, $500, I'm open to that debate and that conversation and making the change and moving forward. But I think just based on the dialogue that we were having, I'm also comfortable enforcing what we have in place. I already say enforcing is, it's what we have in place, we haven't done anything to it other than start correcting our problem of actually having a presence to check.
Having said that, we do have the ordinance in place. Everyone is correct. If council wants Joe to move forward with staff to start enforcing on Saturday, that is the will of the council. But the main objective that we're trying to get through is, what are we going to do in the future? In two days or eight days or two weeks, are we going to go with a flat fee while we're collecting the dollar?
What is the flea market, the flea market of, of past double toll game, 500? An annual fee, they got rid of the dollar, the table fee?
Jeremy?
It's a flat fee of $500.
No table fee, correct?
No table fee, but they have a $500 itinerary merchant fee.
Bill?
I can go with a $500 fee, which I clearly stated, John. I clearly stated here on item three, a business fee of 200 or 500 annually must be discussed fully without quick passage of 250. Now, all I'm saying again is we have something in effect right now that we aren't honoring. Now, I would, for me, I would go with a 500 fee and skip the dollar because enforcement is truly, I feel, is in their ballpark. Not, we have to monitor all those items that Chris just mentioned. That's, that's real life there.
That needs to be the main focus, not the dollar amount.
But this dollar fee, whether you say it's enforceable or not, I could care less. But I would support a $500 fee instead of 250 and skip the dollar, just like our, our group recommended to us.
But we still need enforcement no matter what...
You've got to enforce those other items.
Exactly, and Chris, you brought out a good point.
I'm still waiting for the answer.
Well, Joe and I had already talked about, Chris, Joe and I have, and council, Joe and I have been discussing issues that are out there that people are taking advantage of because we don't work on weekends.
Right.
The idea was to either overtime, budget more money for overtime, since we do have someone that works five days or have that person working four and one on a weekend, every other weekend, whatever, whatever how staff would, would work, you know, with Joe and Jeremy there, you know, we, we'll pass our desire to Joe and he'll make it happen.
Yeah, but the question still remains, are you going to enforce with the staff or these performance standards come this weekend?
No, we're only going to afford what the existing code is.
If we're out there this Saturday, that's the existing code.
If that's the existing code, yes.
But I can't guarantee that we'll be out there this Saturday though.
Right, well, you have to give staff time to, you have to give staff time to get things worked out.
Everyone says that.
The zoning, the existing zoning code, a lot of it's not applicable because the flea markets are grandfathered use.
Right.
So this would be, the idea with this and the planning commission is they would have to come and get a special use permit. They would no longer be grandfathered and they have these, all these set of rules that they would have to follow. And that would be very clear, it's something we can enforce.
So they kind of get that special use, use permit. Once they do that, the new set of regulations or code is applicable. Right now, they're grandfathered.
They can no longer use the grandfather status.
So they would have to have some type of plan, Chris, put together so when they do send someone to do the...
So, there's a lot of, hold on, there's a lot of moving parts here. So are you saying that we're going to mandate that everybody at the flea market operate under a special use permit?
No, the special use permit is for them to operate on Friday, right? Jeremy, so, and once they do that, that will open that there to apply to them all, on all days, right?
Right, the only thing there's something to know is that they're not operating on Friday, or 98.
So the loophole is...
Yeah, so they're not operating on Fridays.
There's a loophole. Operate Saturday and Sunday and all of this, this paperwork.
That's there, I mean, that's...
I don't know, that's terrible.
You know, again, we hashed this darn thing out years ago and we thought we had an ordinance to stop in 2011. And what it was done, going back to what you said, they came in and got this number of table fees. They bought them from whoever lived, and at that time it was Kid Redding or whoever doesn't need one. Just continue the process. If they have 137 tables, they have 80 of them done, give them a letter by 80. If they don't use 80, they use the rest of them the following day or the next day. It's kind of redundant if they send somebody out to pay overtime to, to check or something and all they got to do is come in and get the, get the piece of paper that says we're going to have 80 vendors. 100, and they let you go with that.
Gene, there was more appetite than just checking the dollar table, it was what they were selling, what they're not selling.
Well, I understand that.
And other regulations that, that's what I'm catching from council.
Look, I'm not catching that. I, I've been in there for a while, but I have seen animals, which is illegal. I've seen them, the itinerary merchants, I mean, some of them, you don't know if they're itinerary merchants or they're just selling 50, 50, new stuff, old stuff, whatever, whatever. So I don't know where you put in on that. But, but going back, I think we're wasting more money in doing what we're talking about than just going in and letting them come in here, tell, tell the lady in charge of it, whoever's doing it, that effective immediately, we're going to go back. You have to come in and get whatever number table you feel you're going to rent that day, pay the town 80 bucks, 100 bucks, whatever it may be, and then let her be... We got, we got to allow people to be honest. You know, I, I don't take the idea that anybody's dishonest till they prove me wrong. And I think if she's honest enough and knowing that one day or someday, somebody's going to be down there expecting it and see if they, if she's following the rules, I think she'll follow the rules. And I don't see more than spending taxpayer's dollars to send people down there to check something that they've already bought 80, 80 or 100, whatever they are anyway. I don't understand that.
Jake?
It's a simple way to do it, I think, and that, and that's my simple way to do it.
So something was just said that caught my ear, but number one, I still support what Councilman Conley's saying with the, with the flat fee and move on with life and enforcing, as I said earlier, it's going to be really tough. But Jeremy, you, you just said something that I wasn't quite clear about. So special use, special use permit, so currently they're not grandfathered in, or they're currently they're grandfathered in and that these rules and the ordinance do not apply to them.
The zoning section, not the chapter 98.
The zoning section meaning the section what Mr. Councilman Morrison was reading on?
Yeah, those performance requirements under the zoning ordinance are for uses that have a special use permit.
Okay.
And they're grandfathered, they don't have a special use permit, they never, I didn't come in to get one.
Asking for Friday is not a special use, as Councilman Conley pointed out, is not a special use. It is just a change to our ordinance.
The ordinance will allow them to apply for special use to operate on Friday.
So when they apply for that special use permit, now all these standards will apply to them on Friday, but will not apply to them on Saturday and Sunday?
They'll apply for them every day.
But the only way it's case 23...
The requirement of compliance is okay.
You want to operate on Friday.
That's what, that's what they're asking for. So I think that that answers, I think that answers some of the concerns though because there's performance standards in there. If we create a simple way to collect the fee, we allow this to happen on Friday, they apply for a special use permit, they're no longer grandfathered in, especially the zoning regulations apply to them, then I think that that's a win-win for everybody, right?
She's absolutely aware, she's aware that once she applies to that special use permit, that she's got to go to the un-grandfathered ordinances. She realizes that.
Yeah, I was just, I couldn't find it.
If Councilman Conley would have just said that at the beginning of it.
All right, so where are we at? Are we at moving forward with a flat fee, a flat fee with, John, what do you, what did you want to say?
Do we need to re-advertise for something?
I don't think we do. Do we need to re-advertise, re-advertise for 500?
I think we advertise for 250.
250.
So if you want to go to 5, what to re-advertise? So if you wanna go to five, what to re-advertise?
Okay.
What, you could do it on a special advertising, like one time only, right? Or one reading, emergency.
Not on this ordinance, that's not an emergency ordinance.
You know, you got given the time too, it's almost the end of August, so her Fridays are gonna be limited anyway, and she probably wouldn't even go until next year to do the special use, or start in the wintertime to get that special use, you know, I don't know, she's not here tonight, so. So do we wanna advertise, gentlemen, put it out there again, do we wanna advertise a flat fee of five hundred dollars, and let Joe and Jeremy work out the quirks on enforcement, or whatever they need to do, let them take care of that? John?
I'd like it to come back onto the agenda. If y'all are, uh, keen for five hundred over two fifty, I believe that can be adjusted with amendment, once it's before Friday.
Good point.
I think so.
Doug, can we bring it back, I mean, like it was, with two fifty and have an amendment?
Just going over what you have, you can go down.
That's right, because it's a fee that you advertise for, it would have to be advertised.
Go down, you're fine, if you go up, you gotta re-advertise. Gary, we haven't picked on you yet, uh, what do you think about the idea of advertising for a five hundred flat fee, that she can move forward with, uh, using the special?
How would, how would be good with the two fifty, as long as we, we find a way to enforce with their, you know, with the new regulations.
Bill?
I'm for the five hundred and eliminating the dollar per table.
Gene?
Uh, five hundred, I said that originally, and I see to that.
Okay, Chris, five hundred, are we on board for five hundred? On once, going twice, five hundred fee?
So.
Okay. Joe, we have consensus again.
Someone re-advertise.
Re-advertise for five hundred dollars? And when we get the opportunity to put it on the agenda, please put it on the agenda.
Now, does that mean that, once we advertise for five hundred, does this dollar a table go away? Does that mean Jeremy re-writes?
Once we vote yes, it goes away. If we vote yes.
But you gotta state that, to eliminate it from the ordinance.
Votes in there.
Okay. Now, getting back to the original ordinance that we have on the books, are we instructing anybody to move forward with that, or are we waiting on, waiting to pass the five hundred and move?
Well, we're also instructing our, our staff to review performance standards and everything else that we're supposed to be enforcing there.
That's the most important thing. I have to care less about the dollar amount.
Okay, good. And we all on board, this is the third time, gentlemen.
Yeah, we on board, I'm on board.
And I'm, and I'm, I'm really proud of working you guys, because you guys definitely knew your homework, and, uh.
I have one question, Jeremy, does she, is she aware that the day that she applies with a special use permit, that things are gonna change? Does she know that?
We talked about that with her specifically in the planning commission work session. She didn't like it at first, but she's, and she sort of went along with it.
She's aware that she's gonna have to comply to the new ordinance on the, on the whole.
We're gonna make sure she's very aware, Gene.
Okay, well, I'm reading it, I said, I'm gonna, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, we're gonna make sure, she's very aware before she signs any paperwork, or any, you know, before she takes the next step, don't know where she's at.
My impression is, is that she is, because they're already taking steps to make improvements like they talked about.
Right now, we have an ordinance that says five hundred dollars a, a year plus one dollar table, you know, council could snap their finger and instruct for it to happen, but she is very interested in, in expanding the flea market to Friday, uh, she said something about, uh, maybe, uh, having to put in some, some vegetation or something, and, uh, maybe the town too, could look at maybe some small trees along lining the, uh, commerce like we did the curb and gutter and sidewalk years ago, Gene, to, uh, try to hide it as much as we can hide it, to make it look good, you know, it'll be, uh, something to talk about later on, so. All right, sounds good.
We still got one thing you need to talk about, and are we gonna enforce the orders for the next month or not? If we're not, I have to say tonight, that let's just forget about the orders and tell our manager that we're not gonna enforce the present ordinance that we have on the books.
I think we just did that a minute ago.
Well, I, I think, you know, to me, to me, that ought to be on the council Monday night, that we, we are no filing that ordinance or something, because I don't think we can make a vote here and make it legal, at our work session.
Are we gonna have a recommendation for, um, from staff on how to proceed after not collecting for six years? So did, nobody's really said it, so I was kind of curious, does that mean that the five hundred dollars for the last six years just goes away?
She's paid the fee, she just hasn't collected the dollar.
Does that mean it just goes away, so?
For some reason, we don't know why, I don't know why.
Sure.
I checked with Mayor Dar, he doesn't remember a lot, he remembers talking about a few things, it could be the, the transition from, from her brother that had it with her dad, her dad now has Alzheimer's, he's had it for maybe a couple, two or three, four years, so maybe all that information got lost, they just never came, and then staff never.
Yeah, regardless, I was just wanting to know what's, what's happening with that? Did they never keep a record of how many tools they had?
I totally could not have stopped anything. I think we need to really.
I still say there was a lot of unanswered questions that led me to issue this memo as such.
Well, that, I want, that's why I want, I want more information on that, everything else aside, we're moving forward on that, but I still want more information on the last year.
Doug, can we, can we legally tonight tell Joe that not to enforce this ordinance?
You can, um, give him direction that you don't care if he knows to do it, but you cannot, you cannot rescind his.
And I don't, I don't wanna do that, because there's still an ordinance in place, there's still, uh, still an unanswered question out there, what, what, what's going on with the past six years, is that something that we're just writing off and, and never collecting? Is there a settlement to that? Uh, I still think that's an unanswered question, so I wanna dismiss an ordinance that's been in place, um, I wanna hear an answer to that and what we're gonna do with it, uh, moving forward.
Well, we gonna be able to get that answer, but, since the time that's.
I don't know, I looked into it some, I didn't do an exhaustive, uh, research of the minutes, but from my files, I haven't found anything in the county attorney's files that indicate that there was any correspondence between.
Do we even have any record of the last time they even purchased? PJ?
Yes, the last time, we have the record of the last purchase, and that was, um.
End of season, maybe?
It was October twenty-first, two thousand and eleven.
Very close to end season.
Purchase meaning?
That was the last time that the, uh, the dollar per table tickets were purchased.
See, they came in and purchased a lot.
No, I got it, I got it.
And this is right at the end of the season, so it could've just, the transition, he could've, Larry could've bought the building that he's in, he could've gave Linda the dad or whatever, something, just, something didn't click for the next year.
Right.
The, the, main thing is we need to move forward to get this thing established with five hundred, when would that come before, council?
So are you saying then forget about it and we're moved forward? I mean, I just wanted to be really clear in that, like, I needed, I wanna hear that answer.
Well, my opinion is, we're at fault for not covering the ordinance the way it was. We're at fault. Our staff failed in this mission. Now, how do we penalize, like John says, the little guy out here with a penalty that we should've been enforcing as a, as a town government? And our staff failed, so now we're trying to rectify that.
On a practical level, table fees at a dollar per table, and Bill has given us an estimate that it's close to twenty thousand dollars a year, and if they owe two thousand twelve through two thousand and seventeen, I mean, that's a hundred grand, are you reasonable, can we reasonably expect to try and recoup that cost at this point from this, this business?
I'm not, I wasn't advocating for that, I just wanted to hear an answer from council on that, but I also wanna point out that a hundred grand, just somebody forgot to pay, doesn't, doesn't, I mean, in my mind, running a business, it isn't something that's just conveniently forgot, sorry.
I don't have an answer for it.
Very good at running a business.
If I had an answer, I'd give you one.
That would disappear from my books.
I think, you know, council was just wanting to get this thing with some teeth in it, with the fee, that we know that we're gonna collect every year, uh, we collect the real estate taxes there, we collect from the merchants that sell new stuff there, uh, the only little small piece we're missing is enforcement, which we need occasionally, someone just goes, go and say, hey, you know, I'm with the town, and we'll be looking at your tables, this is, you know, to educate the owners of the flea market, of what they literally need to do, Jeremy, putting out, if, if we give someone a, a two hundred fifty dollar permit, they need to post it on their table, if that's what's required, uh, so that when someone comes through there, they look at it.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I hate to keep delivering, the labor this night, but Doug, I think to clear this thing up, this is my opinion, and you tell me what it's worth, put something on the agenda Monday night, that we, uh, forfeit whatever the amount of money is between two thousand and eleven until the present day, that, that way it doesn't come back again, it's all cleared up by council, uh, decision, that we're gonna allow her, or whatever, however you wanna word it, that she doesn't owe it, and nobody else owes it, and we've written it off the books.
That was really my point that I was getting at.
Gene, that's really, that's a, that's a wise course if we can do it.
That way.
Let me, let me bring this up, I don't think that you can, um, I think it's against public policy to explicitly waive collection of taxes.
We have, when it comes to utility bills.
That's all tax.
Boy, okay, all right, do your own respond to that.
What do we need to do?
What do we need to do? I mean, I'd like to get cleared up, that we don't have to worry about any more of this scuttling.
When this, when we pass, whatever we do, in a, in a week or two, I'm like Gene, I want a clear booklet.
I think the best.
We got clear pathways.
I think the best route, uh, frankly, is when you amend the ordinance, is repeal the old ordinance.
Okay, sounds good.
Now, we're, it has the same effect, but it's against public policy to, um, not explicitly, uh, not collect any tax by exonerating somebody.
Sounds good.
I understand that.
It still doesn't, it's still, it's still out there somewhere, I mean, we can abandon the ordinance, but that doesn't mean the money is still not owed.
No, but if you repeal the tag, if you repeal the ordinance that is for collection of taxes, you don't collect them.
I mean, I just wanna make sure it's done in public.
Yeah, I would repeal it and just let the statute live.
Let's go that route, that sounds like the route. When can we expect to have this on the agenda, Joe? Could you check the calendar very fast?
Yeah, it's most likely, probably won't make it back for public hearing until the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of September?
Yeah, we might, yeah, so, we might be able to make the eleventh, but it's gonna be close to one of the public hearing dates, too.
Sure.
But I'll see what it, tomorrow, I'll find out, sure.
And, uh, could you get with the owner, Ms. Hendrix, and, uh, let her know where we're at again, and, and, uh, that we're still moving forward, and, uh, we definitely have our best interest and, and our business at heart, for sure. Okay. Anybody need to take a break? Bill, anybody? Take five, take five.
Did it work down, are you gonna get pumped up or something? So if you, school starts.
Hey, I quit that stuff. All right, since Chris is here, uh, let's go with the, uh.
Uh, we're busy. Your parents are really busy.
Okay, let's start with the smoking, smoking ban. Todd, if you see Gene and Bill coming, come there, uh, Tom, we're rolling, tell me already. Yeah, it's, it's, time to go.
This is on speaker. It's on. 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 It's on.
We went past the charter update, we'll kind of say that, we'll ask. We're gonna start discussion with Chris for the no smoking at the school bus stops, uh, town attorney. Or do you want Chris to start out all this?
I don't have any, the only reason we're here is because Councilman Conley asked to bring it back, because we have two councilmen not here.
Okay, Doug?
All right, I'm just gonna repeat one, which is pretty straightforward.
Um, I canvassed the state, and there are no jurisdictions in the state that have such an ordinance. There are no, um, state statutes which directly address this. There is an attorney general's opinion, uh, which does say that it's within the, um, police towers of a locality, uh, to regulate smoking in public, public, uh, places, uh, parking on the sidewalk, uh, is a public place, uh, that's the only place that you could reasonably do it. I've talked to Chief Hyde here, and he would, you know, more time to discuss it, because there's, uh, it's gonna be somewhat difficult from the standpoint of the police department, uh, to enforce the ordinance, and, uh, he's also talked to the county attorney's office about this, and they, they will have also some prosecution, um, duties on this. One of the things, uh, we were talking about, given that it's only a twenty-five dollar, um, civil penalty, uh, which is the maximum, uh, that you can, uh, enforce, uh, for prosecution of this, and that you may have to, uh, post a sign, uh, in order to make anything enforceable, it, it might be, uh, just as easy and just as effective, uh, to have the school system send notes, uh, to the parents, uh, asking, um, them to remind adults not to smoke around children at school bus stops, and also, uh, maybe, uh, on the, uh, government channel or, uh, website, uh, to remind, uh, adults not to smoke around children, and, um, if you see somebody smoking, uh, to remind them to please stop.
Do we have the ability to do an umbrella ordinance that says, states that there's to be no smoking near bus stops? Or is there, I understand the signage, but the problem with signage is you're probably looking at about thirty-five dollars per sign plus labor, and you're looking at four hundred plus bus stops.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna be putting a sign in somebody's front yard.
And you have to impose wages, too.
And they change every year, and bus stops do change, um, I don't know, is, is there some way that we can send the message to the public that, that we don't want smoking in the town, for all around our children at bus stops?
You, you can, you can do that, um, as long as you're not, uh, planning to rigorously enforce the ordinance.
I think if we have an ordinance of that magnitude of, of an umbrella, I think if someone's standing there next to someone smoking, I think the reminder would be from one to the other, like we have an ordinance in town, um, whether they're gonna adhere to it, uh, the parks, they have signage, and people sit at the benches, where do you wanna go to the park all the time? I see it all the time, 'cause there's no enforcement, so, you know, I don't wanna put something like the other members always say, we don't wanna put an ordinance out there if it's not enforceable, but we also wanna keep in mind that the children, they don't smoke, and secondhand smoke is killer. That's what we've been told for years and years and years, and, uh, if we can do some type of umbrella that would, uh, take care of Councilman Morrison's wants, I think we should move forward with that.
If I could, uh, if I could have the opportunity, uh, before we move on this, to, uh, talk to the chief and the university's department, and bring this back to our work session in a couple of weeks?
Absolutely, we're gonna do that. Because I've spoken to captain, uh, one of the captains that was here, and he said it was really gonna, you know, Jason, he said it's a really big difficult call to enforce.
Yeah.
Hold on one second, Jake, you got, Jake, you got your hand up?
Oh, that's on the draw, that's on the draw, the hand up.
That's okay.
Um, the, uh, um, I, I like the ideas of sending out the letters, um, and starting there, um, one of the concerns I, I have, again, with, you know, a little bit along the lines still, with some of the ordinances that we talked about tonight, is I think that people should have the opportunity to respond, and if they're not thinking, because it's something that they do on a, a daily basis, that this is impacting children around them, then let's give them the opportunity to understand that this does impact the children around you, so it would be great if this, uh, the school systems would send out notice, uh, to parents, and give them the opportunity, uh, to realize that this is a real concern that we have, um, you know, and the common courtesy of the, the children around you not smoking right next to them. I would like to see that happen, and see if there is a direct, uh, impact with that, uh, with people, um, shying away from that before we start coming down with enforcement. before we start coming down with enforcement on people to be courteous of their neighbor as well.
That's where we need to go first, to be courteous, to let the public know that this is what's on our councilman's mind, prohibiting the smoking at the bus stops, and just give you a little bit of tidbit of information, the school system has a dare day program, and cigarette smoking is considered a drug, cigarettes are considered a drug in that program. Gene?
Well, I'm going back to the same thing I said about the teetering law. This is not the council's, this is not something we should even consider. I mean, this is nothing has to do with our job as a councilman, period. Next thing we'll have an ordinance, how are we gonna raise our kids? Are we gonna do that? No, this is wrong.
Gene, I think you're maybe a little off kilter on that, because this is town bus stops that are in our town. Councilman Morrison has some citizens that feel...
I don't disagree with what you're saying.
I know, but he has some citizens that feel that it's necessary that the council takes.
I don't think, Doug just told us they don't have another one in the state. So that means, that means the towns aren't getting involved in these issues. It's not, it's not an issue.
Fairfax County has it, Winchester has it.
Well, he just said...
Is that close enough for you?
He said that there wasn't.
Well, I talked to the freaking chair of the board of supervisors two days ago. Is that, you know, relevant or not? They absolutely have it in Fairfax County, with their $7 billion budget and tens of thousands of bus stops. So when I hear my numbers, that's...
Don't get me wrong, I don't, I don't like smoke either, I don't like, I smoked years ago.
Y'all wanna take the fight, we can't send cigarettes, we're forced, I'm telling you. Let's just do what we can, nobody said let's just take out guns blazing, let's just do what we can and work. We already sent later to the board of supervisors.
Bring with Jacobin.
We already sent with superintendent of education, they sent a tobacco-free school here, they wanted, what, six months ago? Let's just go in tune with that and see what we can do. I just feel like, you know, do, you know, do what we can, I just felt like we should break it off, so here we are.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm excited too, I'm just thinking that if we can't enforce something, we don't wanna put it on, and we can't enforce it. As an ordinance, now we can write letters, and I agree with Jacobin, with John and Doug, or whoever read the letter just...
Hey, Joe, Doug, do y'all have guidance there, are you gonna get with the major? We'll talk about it, come back in a couple of weeks, if there's any, anything. The council will see what we can do for Councilman Morrison to take care of the citizens that have a concern with children around smoking at bus stops. Alright, let's go ahead back to charter updates, town attorney, should we get a chance, Doug?
Listen, we'll just find a place here real quick. What I've done is I made a summary of the changes that town council wanted back in the 2013 general assembly. And I listed those by section of the town charter, and then I also did additional charter changes that I thought that town council may want to consider. And then there may very well be other charter changes that town council or members of staff may want to consider that certainly I hadn't thought about, leaving it at that since I already listened.
Gene?
Again, we've talked about this thing a lot, I, I think that we, we need to get started. I think what Doug has brought up, I don't have any problem with any of those that we discussed in the past. I think we need to go ahead and at least get it moving and get what we can changed. I know that this charter was written in 1939, I believe, we first...
Thirty-seven. Still bringing pigs at the table.
And there's probably a lot of things in there needs to be clarified and changed, and this isn't, I guess, because it'll be the tip of the iceberg, in my opinion, unless...
A little of the time.
But, yeah, there's a lot of these things that we've got here that needs to be changed in the charter. And I'm willing to say, let's go with it and go ahead and get it to our, to the gentleman or whoever's gonna bring it forward and go for it.
Jake? See anything that catches your eye then?
I had a couple of questions, though I can just email Doug, otherwise I'm fine.
Bill?
Fine, I think we ought to move forward.
Bill, I mean, John? Gary? Chris?
I'm okay as well.
Okay, Doug? Alright, budget calendar, physical year 2018 to 19, town manager.
Alright, Mr. Mayor and members of town council, I'm gonna let BJ take the lead on this, but we wanted to bring forth to council what we consider a very aggressive but achievable budget calendar for coming up. One thing I do wanna point out before BJ gets started is, is that we are gonna use the CIP program, the capital improvement program, for what it really is, get that updated and into council's hands prior to the budget, those are your big ticket items. And so I will let, before I steal BJ's thunder, I'll let BJ take over.
That's okay, as Joe had mentioned there, one of our big things was getting the capital improvement plan through the planning commission. That's what this calendar will adhere to, I've worked with Jeremy to make sure that all the dates will coincide with the planning commission. So we'll present that to council and have that as a tool for building the budget, and also future budgets as well. But this, this calendar will have the proposed balanced budget to council by February 1st with review of the capital improvements and revenue forecasting in January. It'll allow additional work sessions for discussion of the budget prior to voting on the tax rates and advertising for the taxes. So everything is being moved up in advance, as the council had requested from last year's budget process. It's going to be a, a little bit more burden on staff, but I feel that this is a good compromise to both sides.
I looked at the schedule, I personally thought that just moving a month ahead was a big step if you're looking at budgets like the town has done over the past years. Gene, would you like to chime in?
Yeah, I think last year, though, I mean, I, I probably, but the poor problem was, and I think Bill brought it up, and I know Jake brought it up last year, and I brought it up, that there are three things that we need to know prior to the time we get a budget in hand. How many new employees, what kind of a pay incentive that we're gonna give the employees, and the third one was the health insurance issue. Because the health insurance issue of these things are gonna be the major issues, in my opinion, of a new budget. When the general operation of the budget is, to me, is just bullied. So we need to, we need to see something a little prior to the time I get a budget in hand, saying, here it is, it's balanced, like we did last year. I wanna see what we got proposed, new employees, pay incentives, and if there's any major capital improvements, I like to see those before we get handed a budget that we just, you know...
And that's one of the things that we'll be reviewing in January, prior to giving you the budget.
Can we get that earlier than that, don't we already know that pay incentives and insurance and things like that? That we can at least be talking about it or whatever?
Joe?
Yeah, of course, right now we are currently working on the healthcare evaluation, we're trying to build a three to five years plan on that. I'm hoping to get some to council in September on that. Well, also, whilst the compensation study will be brought forth, I'm trying to get it forth to council as a draft in September 18th, so that will be a tool as well. The only other missing component you're talking about is staffing levels, but we should be able to give you those prior to giving you a budget as well. But we are really trying to take this capital improvement plan and make sure it's true to what it really is for, for that you can see truly five years out what kinda money we're looking at project-wise and everything else.
Bill?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I don't need to hold this up any longer. I commend you, BJ, and Joe, that's exactly what I've been waiting for. I definitely wanna see it in this format, because if you don't have a spreadsheet out in front of you running what the totals are and what we gotta pay in a budget, these capital improvement programs are gonna go down the drain. So I commend both of you, alright, I like the schedule, and I wanna tell you right now, you know, I'm gonna be looking at it, and I wanna expect that date to be honored.
Bill, I was just getting ready to add, I think they've heard you loud and clear, but your voice definitely travels outside that door, so... But that's okay, Bill has a passion for, for things that he's experienced over the years, and this is one of them, is the budget building process. John?
BJ, I know you are gonna be providing, everyone's gonna be looking at the budget come February or so. Is it planned later in the process, as we get into April and May, to have like an updated forecasting? Because I know something we talked about when we were discussing an updated schedule for the budget process was that it's more difficult to forecast, but they come to me or that or...
We're gonna have a forecast in January, if we need to make changes, it will be brought forward to council. The, I mean, it's, as we move along, it's dynamic, so it can change every day. You know, the second we adopt something, you know, the final week we could come back with an amendment. But as we move forward, yes, we'll definitely keep council updated when any changes...
Sounds to me that, oh, Jake, go ahead, I was just gonna add that it sounds to me that, that over the past years, projections have been a little higher, and I think BJ and the town manager, Joe, lost their kind of low keys, the anticipated flow of cash that we're gonna be getting in, so, because we found ourselves a thousand, couple hundred thousand short in the...
Yeah, we've been, this is the 2018 budget is on the more conservative side.
Okay, good, Jake?
So, I think the schedule is great, thank you very much. One of the, I think that it would be, I was trying to look at this and figure out the right time, but I do think it'd be good to have a session where we're able to do some goal setting before it gets too far along in the budget process. What I mean by that is if we, go for it, you already know what I'm talking about with this.
Well, that's where we're trying to get this retreat planned in September or October, to kinda get where council's long-term goals are while we, staff starts to build their budget.
Okay, so what I was thinking is, you know, if we know we have some different revenue forecasts, potentially negative revenue forecast or positive, whatever, and we know what we're doing with our capital improvement plan, before we start getting into all the weeds of the budget, we can have an opportunity to say, you know, hey, I would really like to see if it's possible that we can save 5% on our budget this year somehow, some way, and give some directives that way, or, you know, maybe we need to, we need to take a few things off of our capital improvement plan as far as the priority this year, and get that direction. But I think that'd be a lot easier than you guys working up the budgets and then council kinda nitpicking some of the things we want out of it.
That's what I'm talking, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right, so, but if we were able to say, hey, I'm just making something up, but hey, we wanna budget, budget, budget even this year, and staff does that, then let's move on with life and not worry about it, they did what was asked of them, and we don't have to get involved in the details of that. So, that's what I would like to see.
Staff is working very hard to accommodate this council, let me tell you, they have worked many hours, extra, communication-wise, and get where they're at today.
Between the, between the retreat and then also bringing the major projects back to council and maybe some interim, that's what our goal is, is to try to get more feedback on where we need to be and what our goals are.
And speaking of the retreat, please try to respond to Jennifer's request, putting in the days in September that she'll be available and not available, please take care of that, so that she can get some kind of, some kind of date, hopefully planned, maybe the 2nd or 3rd.
You've already sorted, Tim said 16th.
Well, we said 16th, but we had to put it out as five weeks, Joe?
Yeah, the only thing, the reason I was staying away from the 23rd, that's the Brewers and Blues festivals. I don't know if we wanna have a retreat up here while the Brewers and Blues festival's going on on Main Street.
Retreat down there.
We should, actually.
I mean, you know, the retreat will last from 9 to 2.
So what date is, what date's that?
We haven't really got anything yet, no, we've only gotten two responses.
We have several.
Oh, we have several.
16th, is that favorable or not?
Uh, no, we have two or three that cannot make it.
We have Bill and John taking the 16th.
I'll try to, I don't have a schedule, too much, so, most of the time.
I'm only not available on 30th, because I'll be in mayor's camp.
The...
Y'all gonna have to miss the Blues and Blues, or whatever, somebody's gonna miss. What do we have so far, Jennifer?
I haven't responded, because I have a requirement that evening, a buzz right up against that, so I've gone all day.
What evening is that?
Sixteen.
Everybody that has responded is available on the first Saturday in September, but I haven't heard from everyone yet.
We haven't heard from you.
We can play everybody out.
I'm right here, alright.
Mr. Seelov, Mr. T. Ball.
I can't be on the first Saturday in September, I gotta wait, I gotta wait.
Joe?
I would have to, you know, I, just to let everybody know, I'm gonna have a facilitator just go around, which I think is totally necessary at this point, and I've only reserved a potential date at the 16th. I really honestly don't think we could pull it off sufficiently and prepare everything for September.
Sounds like September, there's gonna be...
Sounds like September may be out of the question, maybe we oughta try to push for October.
I mean, it would be nice if we could, before we go to BML, because Gary, have you decided to go to BML? So everyone, I'll be there except for John and...
Can I just throw something out?
Sure, go ahead.
Just, I don't know, because weekends seem to be really hard, is it possible to do like a plan ahead, like a four to 10 type deal, or four to nine and have dinner or something? We, working, not have dinner, but like a working?
Talking about in the middle of the week?
Yeah, if we can't get consensus on a weekend.
Anything is open in the week.
I just wanted to throw that out, because we keep targeting different weekends, and that's been rough, and it's easier for me to go give up a weeknight than it is a weekend.
I find it's like Wednesday.
So...
What is Thursday, Sunday, everybody?
I mean, I'll work, I'll work till 10 o'clock at night, I don't care.
A Thursday night, what does that sound like, everybody?
I can do...
Tuesdays, Mondays, Tuesdays were best for me, as far as afternoons go, but...
Well, I'm usually in a council meeting on Monday.
It's enough noticing, enough noticing.
Gary, what is your...
I'm, I'm pretty flexible in the weekdays, and I could work around the people who have to leave early in the morning or something like that.
I can only do Friday.
I still, I mean, I still would give up Friday.
Yeah, we can, we can...
Yeah.
What Friday are we talking about, then?
Glad it'd be in September late.
I just wanted to give us some more options, because it seems like, you know, we're talking through weekends pretty quick.
Oh, yes, I mean, the weekends are done and chopped, with Gene not being the second. I was gonna, what I was gonna do the second, but since Gene came to here, I was gonna do what I was gonna do the second too. Jennifer, Doug, I'm sorry, Doug, Joe, what will be looking like for Thursday during the month of September?
Uh, you know, um...
Friday? Uh, okay, let me get the calendar up here for Friday.
Does it have to be a Sunday?
No, we'd like to do it before we go to these BML, in that way we haven't looked in, we have something to talk about, Doug.
You're saying Friday day, or Friday, you're saying Friday day?
Evening, right, evening, Friday evening, is that what everybody's talking about? Chris, are you speaking of Friday evening?
Friday evening, that's the company, that's the mess up here.
I offered it as an option, I just...
If that's where we're going, Friday night. Are we looking at Fridays now?
So we're looking at Friday, maybe the... I'm telling you, everybody's jumping right in there.
Come back and do it.
Yeah. Alright, so we're looking at a Friday, uh, take one, get out here.
I'll have to get a facilitator to give you that along.
Probably, uh, 22nd.
22nd?
That would give you plenty of time and council plenty of time, me plenty of time to readjust my 22nd. 22nd guys, sound good, and move forward, let's proceed.
Do you wanna check with him tomorrow morning, Joe, and then I will let council know.
What hours are we looking at, four to nine?
Five hours, you know, we may not have to have...
Can you, can you just throw... Can you, can you just throw, can you throw out a few Fridays in the middle of the night?
I'll email you in the morning, as soon as I hear back from you, too.
It was the same thing she did with, uh...
Okay.
I was going to do you.
So how many hours are you talking?
Bring your sleeping bag, you will be here for breakfast.
I slept some worse.
Some of these guys are gonna have to get there late if they're working.
They started like four o'clock or something.
I'll let you know in the morning.
But you don't want to put her on my calendar?
I don't.
She'll, she'll put it out now.
There's gonna be...
You put four, you can come early, Bill.
I'm six.
I'll, I'll work something out.
Okay, you're good for Mondays, once you're here, for Tuesdays. Anybody else good for Tuesdays?
I'm okay.
Any Tuesdays? Chris is not good for Tuesdays.
No, no.
Chris is only available Fridays.
Okay, got two of them, yeah. Wednesday? John's not...
It's like one of his man problems.
Go on Friday.
Can we invent another ordinance to bring in another day, Thursday?
I think Friday, good.
Looks like Friday isn't gonna be it.
Okay, Joe, we'll let you know and I will email if everyone wants to go.
Good deal.
I'd very appreciate a facilitator if you'd like.
Yep, oh, you'll, you'll like, Mr. Coats has been here many times with Gene, Gene remembers him, he's a real life guy. He'll take control and be in control. Okay, let's go ahead and pass the council discussion, let's go ahead and close meeting then, take care of that a little bit, then we'll come back and, and, and council. Chit chat a while, let's put here and chit chat.
Mayor, I move to council convening to go into closed meeting for the purpose of consultation. We leave a council employee obtained by a public body regarding specifically the matter required permission of legal advice by such council, such matters being the unauthorized appropriation of the council's intellectual property and business interests. Section two point two, that's three, seven, one, one, A, seven, Kentucky, Virginia.
Sorry.
One second. Jake?
Yes.
Chris? John, Chris? Gary, Bill? Follow us, yes. Thanks, guys, for coming out.
Mr. Raza and Mr. Tewol.
Yes. Okay, council discussion, anybody, did you bring anything or everybody went ready to go home or what do you want to do? This meeting is adjourned.